Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Being six years, our policy, weapons of select board to order. Can you hear me on my mask on? Does that work?
Yeah.
Does everyone mind anybody entering by Zoom to just chime in and state your name, please? Okay. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Step into the minutes of the meeting of September 23rd.
Approve the minutes of the meeting.
Is it second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the meeting of September 23rd. Any discussion?
Aye.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. They're adopted. Communications and public comments. School consolidation withdrawal. Mr. Minnick.
Okay, well, I'm here just to really give you a heads up. The, there is a petition that is starting to circulate around town, which reads, shall the voters of the town of Westminster approve the withdrawal of the town of Westminster from the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District, and authorize and instruct the select board to take any action necessary to accomplish such withdrawal and the reestablishment of the town's school district? I've got several copies of that, which I'll put here in the background. And then, the also, there is, I have five articles which Fletcher Proctor came up with. I can't take responsibility for them, but they are, in a sense, suggestions for what, if 130 people sign this and you have to deal with it next meeting, there would be a special town meeting to address this issue of withdrawing from the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. And these are some ideas of what the articles of that town meeting might look like. So there's another couple of things to, which would probably be of interest, especially for next meeting. So as you know, we were forcibly merged with Athens and Grafton now a year and a half ago. And the, as part of the Act 46 consolidation process, it turns out that, and that, we were forced to merge, it hasn't gone terribly well. I mean, we get along with Athens and Grafton just fine, but it has resulted in less, a lot less community involvement in the schools and control over the schools. It's also resulted in an over 5% increase in spending. There's not really much in the way of efficiencies that you can achieve by combining towns that you can't drive to and from easily. So, and the schools are a half an hour apart. So Halifax and Reedsboro, who also were unified, discovered that there is a law that allows, and made use of this law a month or two ago, that allows towns to withdraw from a union district. It's a law that's been in the books for a long time now, 50, 60 years. And so now that's causing a number of districts where the mergers haven't achieved any useful outcome to look at that and say, maybe we should go back to having a town school district. So we're one of those, Athens and Grafton are very much in favor of it, very much in favor of us withdrawing. So that they, then the step is, we withdraw, they approve it. Then they already have had a joint contract, they have one school between them that is used, they would be happy to stay that way, but we have to withdraw, they have to vote to approve that withdrawal, and then we're essentially back to something similar to what it was, where Athens and Grafton work together and Westminster runs its own school. So still all under the rubric of the Northeast, Wyndham Northeast Union. But anyway, that's, that's what's, and the reason why I'm bringing this up now is that, when I would actually prefer not to, because it's so awkward trying to have democracy work when we've got a pandemic going on, but is that the, it's likely the legislature will maybe close this window, or at least consider closing this window. And given the fact that it just, we just don't seem to be gaining anything from the so-called Wyndham Northeast Elementary Union Elementary District, we would, I think the town would prefer to, to run its own schools and go back to a town school district. So we'll see, we'll see whether we get the signatures. Also somewhat of a difficult job when it's hard to go visiting with people and so on, but I'm pretty sure we will, and present that to you at the next select meeting.
Will you give me the information prior to that meeting so that I can get it in their packet? Typically, I do it Friday before the Wednesday.
I will, you mean, the information that is the petition?
That they would be voting on, yes.
Yes, well, the, what they'll be voting on is on petition. And then the, what I just gave you.
I just gave that all to them, so I don't have.
Oh, okay. I'll notify you.
Okay. Sure, please. Yep. And then I'll be able to put it back in their package.
Sure, sure. And, you know, that, those articles were initial, initial thoughts of what the articles of that special meeting would be, I don't know whether we would go with it or not. They're certainly good ideas.
When you say town meeting, are you saying an Australian ballot, or we get together and vote it on the floor?
I, I think in order, in this kind of situation, and I'm not a parliamentarian, but I think I understand that in order to, if we want to have an Australian ballot, we have to vote on doing an Australian ballot at a special town meeting. So it almost from that standpoint makes sense just to have the vote at a special town meeting, rather than vote to establish an Australian ballot. But either is possible, but I think that's, I think that's what has to happen. I'm not sure you guys could just say, we're going to vote on this by Australian ballot. I think it has to be a town vote.
And once that special meeting happens and say, town vote to withdraw from, would that be a done deal then?
No. That would then go to Athens and Grafton.
Yeah.
They have to have their own town votes to approve that.
Right.
They are the government.
Right.
In fact, I'm getting more emails from people in Athens and Grafton than I am from people in Westminster, saying, get on it. So.
The last meeting we had, when we had it, we were outside before it was spread around. How, I mean, I'm just not being pessimistic, but how physically would we hold a meeting like this again?
You know, I don't know.
Discussions have already started and there is no good answers yet.
Well, originally, we could use the school because the school was closed, but the school, is the school open now? So there might be some way to have a meeting if people were dispersed and that we meant all the, so I mean, that's a possibility. The problem was before, the school was not at all open.
Right, right.
We were just saying that's one idea. Yeah.
100 square feet doesn't leave a lot of people able to attend.
But it may not snow before it begin in December, too.
But if we go backwards from when we do this before, we have, how many days from the, if it was next meeting and we say yes, then you have how many days to warn?
30 to 40.
30 to 40 days to warn it. So we'd be in December no matter what.
December 15th is what the date was.
Do you know the petition is December 15th? The reason for that is that gives Athens and Grafton time to warn their meeting and get it done before the legislature takes, has too much of this session.
So you're saying that legislation could come back in January with a new, a new committee and try to close this down so you can't do it?
Right.
What stopped them from, you don't think they can reverse it either?
They could, at this point, it's hard to know where the legislature is. The legislature could say, you know, this merger thing hasn't worked out very well. But, and let's leave it on the books that towns can withdraw. But, but on the other hand, there are certainly are loud voices saying, this is ridiculous, we just forced these towns to merge and now they're, now they're withdrawing. And that is true with Reedsboro and Halifax. The Secretary of Education and the Board of Education approved it because they had to approve it because it's law. They really didn't have a choice, but Secretary French said, I am not happy about approving this, approving this, but I, but I have to. So, you know, there are, of course, multiple opinions on it all at the legislature.
Would there be any repercussions, you know, grants and like that stuff that you funding with the state say, hey, you want to play games? We can play games.
I don't, I don't think so. We'd be a legitimate school district. We have, we, you know, if the Secretary of Education and the Board of Education approves, approves it as they have had to do without Reedsboro.
Choice, right? You're going to have to approve it.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah. I haven't heard of anything back there.
True.
Any other questions with Nate?
The cost to put on an election, we put so much money in our budget, so I assume because we're calling it, it's coming out of our budget. The cost to have it as a town meeting should be less than if it was an Australian ballot, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
But it would definitely come out of our budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, there is no school district. Yeah. It's a, it's a unified district.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll give you.
Yes. Unfinished business. FY21 equipment purchase dump truck.
In your packet, you have, what you requested is some suggestions of where we could come up with the additional 28,000, 27,000 and change. And I've highlighted them in your packet. So these are suggestions, these are not etched in stone, but between Chuck and I, we've looked at them and agreed that this is where we could possibly not get the extra culverts and drainage fabric, et cetera, that we typically would. The state permit has dropped in the last year to 1350, so there's 650 contracted services. We would keep that to a minimum and save 2,000 miscellaneous and training. Typically, we, we can pretty much call that shot, so we'd save about 350 on that. And then equipment building maintenance, we'd hold off on any major repairs to save about 4,000. And gas, fuel and oil, if it maintains the level of pricing that it did last year, we could save about 8,000. And repairing parts, about 5,000. So between all of those, that is enough to purchase the 10-wheeler dump truck.
Is there, will there be any serious problems with cutting the building maintenance, equipment building maintenance?
No. Again, we'd have to play this by year. If all of a sudden we had an emergency, then we'd have to look for something else. But this is a good start to let us know that, yes, it's capable, we're capable of doing it, it's just a matter of where and how we, we save that money. So again, emergencies are emergency and.
Right.
We have to scramble some.
At this point, our fuel system, the pumps and tanks, have just got inspected. The septic system has just been pumped and inspected. Our furnace has just been checked, inspected, and okay. So I can't foresee anything major going at this point.
And how we set up with?
Yes, we did. And we've got two letters back from the companies that we use, and neither one would give us a price, said that they would defer to A2G and Westminster-Gromon.
And a good chunk of that COVID money, we're going to be getting back after the work is completed on Forest Road.
On Forest Road, that's correct.
Through the ground, so. By spring, we should be.
By winter. By winter, we should be ready for our meeting. So I don't know.
Do you need anything from us? Is this information?
You don't have to vote on it, it's in the budget. So you asked me to, you know, locate monies, and I did. So at this point in time, we will move forward and get the truck to us.
The money comes back to you later next, or next week, or are you talking about this?
This company.
This coming winter. Yeah. The work has to be done by September 31st. Yes. So it will be there shortly thereafter.
Any other question?
Another common, I guess, and that is being kind of disappointing that we went through all the work of putting this budget together and going over it line by line. And if the plan was to buy a 10-wheeler instead of a six-wheeler, then why didn't it come out of the budget? Because I find it hard to believe that you guys didn't have it in mind that you're going to buy a 10-wheeler.
I cannot answer that. I, I heard discussion on it, no decisions were made at that point. And in fact, the decision was only made very shortly prior to the meeting that we explained that we were going to be over budget by 27,000, almost 28,000.
Which is the difference between the six-wheeler and the 10-wheeler?
Basically. Basically.
And this comes out of the 180,000 equipment reserve fund?
130,000.
130, whatever it is. So I was going to bring this up, that budget time, would it make more sense, since we know every year what you're going to replace, that instead of just having a set amount of money, you could say, this year we need a 10-wheeler dump truck, and this is what it's going to cost, and so it's in the budget with maybe a couple thousand for.
Chuck, myself, and Craig are working on that.
Okay.
So that this doesn't happen again.
Yeah. This makes more sense.
I'm going to give you a seven-year forecast of each, for the next seven years. So it isn't really what you're paying for the truck, also what you're getting in trade. Because that's what's out of your pocket. So that's what we're getting together to come back, so then we can show you for the next seven years, and then where a loader would come along, where an excavator would come along, where, so that some of those are 10 or 15, some of the trucks are on 7, so that basically we lay out all the equipment.
Yeah.
And we would know that in five years, we'd be this much, in six years, we'd be this much.
Yeah.
And to answer his question, we, we order them all here ahead of time, the six-wheelers. Yeah, probably some of them are, it's our fault, not Athens, but originally, there was a six-wheeler on board. It wasn't like you didn't want, we ordered 10, that number.
Yeah.
This X amount that companies different, we order them here ahead of time. And here's, here's the six-wheeler, here's the other. Just kind of wait to the end because they're all, they're all there, then you grab which one you want, where it used to be, you ordered what you want, and you can't. So we're, right now, we're putting orders in for all of next year, we're almost done all of next year. So even now, Chuck's head is heading on, starting to discuss, which are you going to do next year? It's just that the times have changed. Or the trucks are, I mean, we have the trucks on schedule anyway, but do we not?
We do. The thing was, is this, this was a discussion on changing the style of truck to keep up with the times, and we're trucking farther, and so it all came about that the six-wheelers are slowly but surely, they have their use, and so we're still got to stop a lot of them. But to jump up to a 10-wheeler for trucking makes more sense. Less travel, getting sand between, within the storm, so.
In the defense, he was brought in way too late in that discussion. He should have been brought back in that discussion months ago.
Yeah.
But it was, it was wrong. Well, as I said, I'm very disappointed that we're, you know, scrambling to try to find money for a truck that when we ordered, or we budgeted for one, and then we ended up with something else entirely. And I didn't think that's the way, I don't think that's the way we should be doing business. But, no, it's a good point.
Can we?
Yeah.
When, when I, when, you can break free out of the question.
Uh, yeah, go ahead. State the name, name.
It's Nate Sodder.
Yeah.
So thank you very much, Sheldon, for your comments. I feel exactly the same. What truck number is this six-wheeler?
The truck that's getting replaced is truck number 7.
And what year is that truck?
Truck number 7 is a 2014.
Okay. So is that the truck in your capital plan? That's essentially what you guys are talking about, is that you have a capital equipment plan that has a rolling equipment replacement. Is that the truck in your plan that was scheduled to be replaced this year?
Yeah.
Okay. So then you decided in the 11th hour to change it to a 10-wheeler? Which I get, I'm just trying to get caught up a little bit. The, the last meeting, you couldn't hear you guys at all, so I'm just trying to get caught up a little.
Yes, that's correct. That truck would be upgraded, that's the plan.
Yeah, and that's over the past, according to the worksheet Russ provided, over the past four years, five years, that truck is the third highest in maintenance costs. So it makes sense that that one gets replaced. But I guess again, it's, yeah, disappointing that there wasn't some more forethought in budgeting time period. And my questions about where you're finding the 27,000, I guess I will leave for the budget discussion. Is that where that's appropriate, Susan?
Well, that's for the next budget. I think we're going to leave, unless people have a problem. I have no problem with the figures that you have given me, where you have found the 27,000. And I think Nate, if you want to see a copy, get at the town office to see these savings that Russ just discussed.
No, I, I have it.
Okay, okay.
My questions and comments are going to be, and again, what I was saying is, I think it's appropriate for your, there's a line in, I believe, for budget conversation. Maybe my questions of these savings numbers not reflecting over into your next year's budget and being reduced is the budget discussion. So basically, if you're talking 8,000 out of your fuel and oil this year, why would you fuel and oil propose next year the same number?
That'd be part of the budget discussion, I'm sure.
Then I'll wait, I'll wait to follow up with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion on that? Town reappraisal, options, funding, bids.
You asked to table it. In your packet, you have the ledger sheet that shows how much money we have in our reappraisal fund. So we do have enough to put it out for a complete bid, if you so desire, or doing an option of partial, or whatever you so choose.
How much time we get to, we don't have to make that decision right away?
That's correct.
I guess that's a question.
You, there's not a deadline, Craig, but you should put it out to bid, and that will take some time, and spring is typically a good time to reassess properties, so, spring, summer. So if you don't start now with, with a direction, then we're going to be scrambling during the season that they should be reappraising.
We're in a different time. So for us, the highest company that's going to go to every house, and we got this COVID-19 going on, aren't we a little early to try to figure that out?
All I'm after is what your direction is and whether we wait from that direction, that's fine. Or if you're going to, to use a company, I would say that would be up to them to distinguish between.
I guess I feel comfortable, and I'm not against Russ, but I would say before we move further, I would like to have that company come and explain to us how they're going to agree your, how they're going to appraise every house and go to the house, and a lot of people won't let you in their house, or don't like them.
And they do that all the time. I mean, every year they do that, so.
We're, we're, we've never been, it's the COVID-19 on.
I, I totally agree.
We would do that after we got the bids and settled on the company?
I just always say, I wouldn't, I don't think they'd come to me, but if he contacted one and said, how are you going to handle it if you did do our town? How are you going to handle contacting all these people next? You'd go into their homes and having them show you your home and everything. I would think there'd be a lot of people in Westminster would be upset about it, but I could be totally wrong. And then how are you going to have grievances? And, you know, I'm sure they, if you're that company, you must be figuring it all out and pick up some plan for it, but as the select board, minute we pass it, I would assume there's going to be a lot of people asking, you know, how are we doing? And that's all, I'm just trying to.
So more information.
Yeah, more information because of, only because of the COVID-19.
Right, and.
Okay. How are we, how does this company approach and delicately figure out how to get around and go to these homes and see these people?
I think you're absolutely right. I mean, people are not going to act by some plan.
So we could, Chuck?
For that criteria, prepare your bid process. So you ask, I'm not, how they're going to do it, put it in their explanation, prepare their bid, so then when you choose, you go, well, they're going to do it this way, but these guys are going to do it this way. I like this way better.
Are you questioning?
That's what I said. It's just strictly the COVID-19, it's how, how, how do they plan on here?
Right, that's what I mean, yeah. How are they going to deal with it?
Yeah. And have we, have we, are we still discussing reappraisal versus the F thing, or have we decided?
I thought we were. Well, I'm pretty sure Mr. Klyfelter went over that in depth. I thought we discussed COVID-19. I thought we discussed the triage methodology they would use to offset or try to offset the onsite concerns raised by COVID-19. In fact, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that specifically is exactly what we went over with him when he was on the phone, unless I missed something.
I agree.
So we, we did go over it. Now, I'm not saying we can't amplify it and have more of a discussion, certainly we should, but I'm pretty sure he did discuss the fact that they. He discussed that in the books, there were supposed to be pictures in writing. Right. He also discussed, he wasn't comfortable that we had done it correctly, and that it was totally outdated. He discussed that, and that there wouldn't have to be several visits. Right, but we had discussed, we had raised the concern over COVID-19, and I believe they have a, you know, he has a certain mechanism or a certain way that they, they do it. I thought that he did.
But still, I like the idea of being part of the bid process, so if I was bidding on it, that'll be. So if he's bidding on it, that'll be part of the specification. How do you plan to address the?
There'd be two things, appraise it and grieve it. Because if you grieve your taxes, you have a right to vote in front of more than one person too. And that these people would have to, we'd have to have hearings, have it set up and everything else.
I don't know. I, I may need to say something. Obviously, you had a committee that's met with providers.
You might have been in Maine when you discussed this.
Oh, okay, that's, because I didn't know that. But I'm thinking that this is the least good time to do, to try to engineer a major, um, reappraisal. Because it's just, there are some people who seriously don't let their friends in. They don't let their family in their houses. And so to try to work around that when it's not, it's not, um, you know, we could wait a year or two and possibly everything will, will be different. I, I just, I just don't think we need to push for this thing now. That's my feeling.
I mean, right now, Russ, we have a choice that the state does not mandate that.
Not yet. Right, as Mr. Klyfelter said, last meeting, you warned us that it's very close.
Yeah.
And as soon as.
And we've been close before and then the next year it wasn't so close.
Well, it's gonna be closer because of the, the amount of money people are paying for houses right now, which are. Yeah, but it's, it's again, it's not a normal kind of way. It's not normal. It's, it's out of the normalness.
And it's in, it's true.
And it's gonna change the figure a lot.
So are we thinking we want to wait a few more months?
That's my thought.
A little table, a table issue till?
Yeah. And I guess I didn't understand what a partial one was either two of you.
Table it till when?
Table it till, let's see, first of the year. First of the year.
Little January?
Yeah.
First of May to January. Honestly, yeah, we haven't started on tell the people and they haven't got their second tax bill yet too. You know what I'm saying?
Anything else on that? Petitions for allocations, letters.
You requested, um, the seven, uh, parties to write to you with their appropriation needs because they're not getting signatures this year. In the packet, you have one additional one, um, visiting nurses. They're asking for a $2,500 increase from, from their original ones. This is their first year. And we are still missing two of the original that did not respond. But to be fair to them, I was gone this afternoon to sub visits. So they could have emailed them to me. But most everybody really thanked you for that opportunity and, um, that when we start doing the warning, that these would be on there. And at that point, we just, we would discuss terms and et cetera, so. So as soon as I get the others, I will forward them to you.
So do we have to go through one by one and decide that we're going to, do not have to do that yet?
You don't have to do it yet, but you, you have folks on TV right now waiting for an answer. So it is up to you. But again, the warning does not have to be set right now, that's for sure.
I mean, I guess the decision as far as I'm concerned is, and I guess my thought originally was that people would be, we would put the same amount as they were granted last year.
On the warning.
On the warning.
And of course, it can be adjusted on the floor.
Yeah.
Well, how do we handle the one that keeps asking every year for more than they don't get it?
Well, it would be the same, it would be the same they got last year because, because no signatures.
The same as they asked last year or the same that they were granted?
The same as they were granted last year.
So this amount they're asking, isn't that a lot more than what they were granted? You see what I'm saying? Yeah, it's just, this is the same group that asked for that 10,000 every year. We only give 35. Well, their letter is saying that they want to ask for it, the 95 again.
And the visiting nurse is doing the same thing. They're asking for an increase.
Right.
This is, hello? This is Sharon, visiting nurse in hospice for Vermont in the answer.
What's your last name, Sharon?
Juehier.
Juehier, thank you, go ahead.
Sure. Um, so if we can get the signatures, um, would we, would we be able to petition to call the increase? The only reason I'm asking is that this year due to COVID-19 and hospitals closing and only staying open for elective services, we took in patients that were high risk, that couldn't go to the hospital and continued to serve them with no reimbursement from Medicare or Medicaid. And we did increase the number of visits in Westminster by almost 50% this year compared to last year. So I'm just wondering if we are able to get the signatures required? If you would consider that 2,500?
Well, why, if they're asking for it and we put it as an article, we're a select board, they're not giving them money anyway. They still, so I don't really have a serious problem. In other words, these are just articles put on the floor and they still have to be voted on. You see what I'm saying? But they can ask for more all the time and they get, whether they get the signatures or not doesn't mean they have it. They still gotta go.
No, I understand.
And they can amend it on the floor and ask. So I don't really think, I haven't, that's one of the selectmen have a problem then saying, okay, let's put it as an article and we'll bring it up.
Well, they, I mean, visiting nurse will get, because they've had it for so long, they automatically get the amount that they've always asked for.
Right.
So I would have to, from my opinion, if they wanted 25, I don't know. With the COVID.
But as a select board, we could just, we have the authority to say yes. Go ahead, put the article on the floor without the signatures in this case. But we're not giving them the money. They still have to be voted on the floor. So I don't really think I have that much of a problem asking them to go get the signatures. You see what I'm saying? Because we're not like we're granting them the money.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. So essentially, but to be fair, any of the other applicants who are not getting signatures could come in and say, well, we want to up our request also this year. And we would, to be fair, we'd have to say, okay, that's a little.
That's true, but they can get a chance to get it voted down or if they don't ask for it, they're all set. Right?
Well, no, people still have to vote.
If you've got three years.
Oh, if you got three years.
If you got your three years, you're done. Okay, you wouldn't ask. You decide you want to ask, now you gotta go back and have the article put on the floor. So the only ones that might ask would be somebody who's less than three years.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But.
This is the only one that's got their three years and they just asked them for.
They've got three, so they have a right, they would go get the signatures and they would bring it to us and they would go to vote.
So it's a difference.
Yeah, that's different than the other ones we talked about.
Right.
That they still have a right to ask for that amount of money there again. That's a little different than us to say yes, but you can only have what you have last year.
Right, I understand.
Karen, are you still there?
Sharon.
It's Sharon, yes, I'm still here.
Um, thank you for all your effort and, uh, that, for the community during this. Really, um, really appreciated helping.
Well, we thank you for your support of our services. We greatly appreciate all that Westminster gives to the V and H as well.
And I just wanted to amplify what you had said to make sure that I heard it correctly. The 25 dollar increase isn't even, isn't remotely close to really the capital expenditure or the additional outlay that your organization made because of the extraordinary impact of COVID, correct?
That is correct.
And again, thank you for everything you did throughout this process.
Well, we're glad to do it, you know, we're here to help people and, um, we couldn't do it without your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Select your pleasure.
I, I don't have, I don't have a personal problem. I think they shouldn't have to go get the signatures because they still have to get up in the town meeting and ask for the money. So I really don't have a problem with, but, but. I, I think it's the other one I had a little of like, I still think they even have a right to ask for what they want to ask for.
Well, then, so will everyone else, so that's fine.
No, I don't know, I don't. I, I'd be more comfortable, we went back and granted them just what they got last year, which was 3,000 and some odd dollars, but.
This is a year of special circumstances, so.
Yeah.
So, um, you want to grant visiting nurses 1,400 to the.
Do we, do we need to have that as a, I think it is, because it's an article, we need to have the select board vote, allow them to do it? We've never done this before.
That's correct. We need to go through each one of these, but it doesn't have to be this evening, but you can.
But since she's right there, why don't we let her know by the select board voting on it? To be fair to them.
We'll vote on that one at least.
Yeah, so at least we're fair to them. So I'll make the motion that we authorize the, who are we authorizing?
Visiting nurse in hospice for Vermont, yeah.
Yeah, to not have to have the required signatures and it will become an article on the town meeting.
At the amount of?
I'm trying to find it. Is it, it's 14,000? Is that what, you know, it's 2,500, correct? So she's asking for 14, that's correct, yeah.
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Okay. But before you do this, and I don't have a problem with where you're going with it, I, I think we need to very seriously talk about the precedents we're setting and we gotta decide, you know, whether we're gonna go back next year if we're over this COVID or we're back to a halfway normal situation, whether we're going to go back and say, okay, you didn't get signatures last year and, and this is all of these ones that we're kind of granting here. We're either gonna have the signatures when they ask for more money or not. So does the visiting nurse need to come back next year and for the following three years with signatures? Because we're setting a precedence here.
Yeah, but I just think that, I mean, there has been, it's not a precedent. It's just for us. I mean, there are, for example, one of the things is if you want to run for office, you have to get so many signatures in order to be on the ballot.
Correct.
And, uh, they're, they're stopping that, but just for this year. That doesn't mean that there's, they're making a precedent that will follow. It's just during the COVID that.
I, I would agree with you. I thought the only reason why we had authority to even do this was because of the Secretary of State or whoever gave us permission to say, because you don't have to do it. Otherwise, we wouldn't have the right to do that. That's correct.
And so next year will be like this year never even happened.
Exactly, yeah.
Maybe we should amplify the motion to specifically state that we are taking the leave of the Secretary of State to make a special exception because of the COVID crisis. In this particular case, Vermont Nurse in Hospice, and I'm not taking anything away from everyone else who's done amazing during this, but specifically for the fact that she's representing that they went way out of pocket to assist our citizens in distress. And I think that's what this is all about. That's why we're giving a waiver. And I think it's, it's more than worthwhile and certainly shows more than just empathy. These are the people who we're relying on to get us through this.
And then going back to what Sheldon bringing up, he's just concerned that.
I totally, I'm not.
And I'm going like, well, we, we didn't even have a choice until this time. And now they're letting us choose and I'm with you, let's choose to allow them to have it. I wasn't under the assumption that we're gonna do it next year and next year.
Right, no. No, this is an exception that we're taking because of the COVID.
But I think we've got to state.
That's, that's what I said.
Okay.
And I, because based on what you wrote, Brett, I said we should amend our motion to specifically.
I can amend it so that this is only good for, what is our next town meeting? For the fiscal year 21, 22?
20, 20.
The one in March.
Cause it comes March.
March of 2021.
Yeah. So, yeah, it'll be good for the meeting in March of 21.
Following Secretary of State's guidelines.
We should have a second before we discuss more, but I have a question.
Okay.
Discussion?
So does this count as one of their three years?
Um, I would say we're gonna say.
If they pass, yeah, because that's the whole question is, if you keep amending different dollar amounts every year, it says it has to be the same amount. So you, even though you asked for the same amount and you don't get it, it doesn't count. You see what I mean? You gotta keep getting, so if you're asking for 3,000, at least I understood, you have to have three years in a row that you get granted 3,000. One year they only give you two, you gotta start over again unless you want to go.
Okay, my question is, is if this passes at the amount that they're requesting, does it count as one of their years?
Why wouldn't it if it gets passed on the floor? That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah. What would you prefer?
We're only.
Make it simple if we just said.
We're, we're only signing the articles to put it on the floor. We have nothing to do with voting.
Right, I know, but.
So if they go in front of the voters and get it passed, I don't know how you would argue that you can't count it. It's almost like saying, well, we'll let you have it, but you, you, because you didn't get an article signed, we're not gonna count it as a year. I mean, somebody's gotta make a call and somebody else besides us to find that rule.
At this point, we don't even know how many people you can have this like town meeting.
Yeah.
In March, so.
I, I think we could have that a special long time. I don't think we all know that answer, you know?
But I think we.
So we still haven't answered Russell's question. No, I don't think, I don't know the answer to that, but I'll, you call and find it out. Who's gonna call?
And does it, every town has, has different rules. And ours has, happens to be three years with signatures at the same amount and approved. So I'm just asking just a simple question. If this passes at $14,000, does it count for year one of three year?
I would say yes.
I'm having a hard time to, to explain why you wouldn't. I, I really don't understand.
Without signature.
I'm just.
So even three years with signature, with cases you wouldn't have, you have to go one, two, three. And I.
That would be my interpretation, but.
And that, and how difficult is that? You know, I mean, it's, yeah.
Well, if it's, if, if, whatever, I guess.
If the point is, if the reason that you have and people have to act, uh, get the signatures for three years, it's, I mean, I, one assumes that it means that, and, and then have it approved. Because if it doesn't get approved the first year, then it doesn't act. Right, but if it's approved by a vote of the town, even though they didn't, they, they, we only do the portal to get them onto the.
Warning.
The warning. Uh, but once they're on the warning, then it's the town that's deciding whether it is. So I think that I personally would think that if somebody gets a vote in the first year, you know, this, that we should count it as their first year, they still have to get the signatures for the other two.
But Russ does bring a point, now that I agree with you. So for example, we're doing visiting nurse. We should tell all those people that they, if they don't get the votes, the select board decides we're not gonna count it, is what he's asking. Because we have a right as the select board to say, we'll let you have the article, but we're not gonna count it because you didn't get the vote. So could, so they could go back and say, well, the heck with it, I'm gonna go get the votes then. Because at that point, we would have to count it, right Sheldon?
The signatures.
Yeah, go get the signatures, we would have to count it. If that's the case, we should decide tonight and then tell those people that here, yeah, the select board's gonna do it. You don't have to have the signatures, but you're not gonna get counted as part of the three. And if you do, you gotta go get the signatures.
I think that makes it much clearer that.
So essentially it would be one more year people.
Unless, unless we as a vote say, no, we're gonna count it.
Well, it's kind of me so.
But these people who gave this thinking that, oh, this is part of my three years, we should at least tell them if that's the way we're gonna do it.
So you think it should count? You don't think it should count?
I don't think it should count.
Kevin, do you have a?
I think it should count. I think, again, the COVID-19. I think it should count, I think, again, the COVID nineteen creates a, the year is not a mulligan, it's not a race off the record, the Secretary of State said we can make a decision, I think we should make that decision, I do agree with Toby, I don't think we should put any additional burden on, and to be fair to everyone, any of them, the request being made for Vermont, the nursing outfit is more than reasonable, given what they do and what they had to do to meet this crisis, so they went out of their way to assist us, I think we're being hyper-technical by simply forcing, oh, we'll go get the signature.
Craig.
I, I, I'm for counting, really, I'm going like, if we say they don't need signatures, then we should count it.
Yeah.
Okay, it's just, it's just.
Count it.
Okay.
You can help, we still have to vote on the board.
So, did you vote?
No.
Uh, it's not a vote, but I, I'm in favor, I mean.
Okay, so four to one, thank you.
Uh, but this is not the motion, the motion is for the visiting nurses, whatever, amount, twenty-five hundred, fourteen hundred, fourteen thousand.
They're asking for fourteen thousand, and we're going to, as a select board grant, to not have to have the signatures so that they can be put on and so.
And is there any more discussion about that? Let's vote then, all in favor.
All right.
Means, no, that passes.
Thank you.
Yep, draft a new personnel policy, is there an update?
No, he, uh, my colleague is waiting for me, it's my fault, but I will, I will diligently try to get together with him this week coming up, so.
Still noted, Craig is going to be diligent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Bold harmless agreement, Chris Harrell, Patina Gerv.
Um, you skipped to the next one.
Oh, that budget, oh, okay, no, we haven't had, okay, so the last meeting, we talked about going over the first two pages of the budget, of the next budget, um, and deciding some things so that we're not doing it all at once, so, um, let's do that. Uh, so we're starting, the first page. Yeah, page one is salaries and selectmen, salaries and wages, selectmen salaries, same as last year, fifty-eight hundred. How's that sound? Anybody want to argue for a raise? No, okay, reasonable, clerk's salary, um, and this includes the, that was increased this year, is that correct?
That's right.
Seventy dollars a meeting, so that would bring it to sixteen eighty, any discussion about that? That seems reasonable to me. Social Security.
I, I needed to grab a number for employee-based rates, um, so that I can estimate what the social security retirement and health benefit would be, so I, you had an issue last year of two point, uh, excuse me, three point oh, um, so I used two point five, that it, that was a clope of a coin, that would be up to you to, to determine that, whatever you want me to use.
And, I mean, what we've done is put that in the budget and then in the first of June, and then do, see what the actual cost of living is.
Exactly, you just don't want to go too low, then you, if you did have a three, three and a half percent increase, then you would be in a world of, of hurting because you would be overspending, so I don't know where you want that number.
I think two point five is reasonable, Kevin's looking at the possible living.
The only problem, we, we get into it every time I'm on here, once we say that, we're automatically locked back in, we have a long discussion, it's too bad we couldn't put like three percent in there, knowing that they don't necessarily give out three percent, but every year we put it in and we didn't say, okay, now that's what they're going to get, you know?
Well, I'm sorry, you didn't do that in the last two years.
Right.
That, that's not true, you put three percent to cover the budget, but you gave us what.
Right.
What the actual cost of living was, which was, one year was two point one three three.
Right.
And then last year was one point six.
I was thinking that we put.
So the three is not based on.
Right.
So if you put two point five, we're, we're actually putting in a little less than we did last year, is what you're saying?
Yes.
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
With the expectation that there's not going to be a huge inflation.
All right. My current call of two thousand twenty-one is one point three.
Two thousand twenty-one, so, that's projected.
Social Security, yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, so I guess.
So two point, what'd you put, two point five?
Two point five, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, we do too. Being that it's less than last year, I'm definitely for it, yeah.
Yeah, I think that just makes budgeting closer, more precise. Okay, selectmen's expenses.
I'd like this to jump to health insurance.
Oh, yes, you have good news, don't you?
We do, in your packet, you have the breakdown of the FY twenty-two healthcare adjustment for the first half of the year, it is one point seven five percent, when many companies are posting way, way higher than that, we were very pleased with it, the downside is they have taken away, or they've added to the out-of-pocket for the employees, so, and, and many different categories, but overall to the town and the taxpayer, it is a one point seven five percent increase for January to June thirtieth.
That's just twenty-one percent, twenty-one, right, and.
The, the second half of the year, it would be a, a guess, so as you see, I use two percent for FY twenty-one and ten percent for twenty-two, to make sure that we have it covered, but that is working out to be only a three thousand dollar increase, because we had covered substantially the first, the second half of FY twenty-one in the last budget, so we're not seeing that huge increase.
I have a question, please, um, I don't know if we could, there's, do we have a comprehensive number for the average for municipalities in the state of Vermont, increases for two thousand twenty and two thousand nineteen, do they keep that statistic?
For health insurance?
Yes, just curious.
It is based on your usage and it's based on how many employees you have per debt, per tax.
I'm just saying, does it, does.
So there is a, there is a benefit comprehensive package, she has the book, but it does, it's not apples for apples because it can't be.
No, no, what I'm asking is, I mean, if we'll do all the towns for Porter.
Well, I know Blue Cross Blue Shield went up substantially, again, like twelve percent last, last year, where we went up about five percent, so those towns that have MVP did, did much better than Blue Cross Blue Shield last year.
I'm not in any way questioning the, the number, I'm simply asking, is there a repository for comparable information that is kept by the state of Vermont or anyone else, Nemrick even, that keeps a listing or an average or an aggregate over the last three to five years perhaps, of what the average increase has been in healthcare costs for the average municipality, that's all I was asking.
I can look back at ours.
Okay, but isn't that something?
Again, it's gotten, uh, town to town.
GLCT would provide you?
Would they? Say, no, it's MVP.
No, but their, GLC does all the towns and they would have a cost breakdown, would, would they have a cost breakdown, what you're saying, all these other towns, just asking, yeah, does five percent to me?
I've never seen it.
Okay.
I've never seen it, I, I know.
Two thousand twenty-one, five percent for private sector is where it is, so that's not bad, you're at one point seven five.
And.
Correct?
What I just got in the mail from MVP and Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, Blue Cross was much, much more again, they were a substantial increase, I didn't do the, the percentage, but it looked to me like it was eight, eight to nine, and we were at one point seven five with town of Westminster.
Thank you.
So, do you want that number?
One sixty-five.
Go back five years, Kevin?
If it's possible.
Sure we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Russell.
So we might have more discussion on this later?
Not that's going to change the number.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just saying, to me, the number seemed reasonable.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'd like to see some providence maybe from.
Yeah.
Not the private sector, but from actual.
Yeah.
Like, kind, equality.
Yeah, but it is, like you said, it's higher because what you pay for insurance and what you get covered.
No, oh, yeah, I get it, I get it. Thank you, Russell.
More on that section? Selectmen's expenses, four thousand, so this is fact TV.
Selectmen's expenses has fact TV, I thought that's legal, or is that legal?
Fact TV has always been put into your expense, because it's your meeting that, that has it, and the rest is your ads, your.
Oh, so legal service for our attorneys down below, okay, yeah.
So if the FY twenty actual was five thousand, why, why didn't you budget, why is the budget less, do you think?
Well, we didn't know, uh, excuse me, COVID nineteen was going to kick in.
Right.
Um, so we were assuming that your costs were inflated for one year, not for the duration, so we went to three thousand because that was a very even number.
Right.
To go with, and this year I'm proposing a little bit more in case COVID goes a little bit longer.
Yeah.
Um, that we're asking fact TV carriers and.
Right, and that will cover it if, for some reason?
That's correct, well, I, again, if it goes all year and it, other meetings have to be zoomed, then they will be showing an expense also.
Yeah, okay.
But this should, this should cover us.
Okay, good. Uh, county office supplies.
Did you come down?
There was a car accident, I'll be with you.
Okay. Do we have to do anything?
Stop, just do a little.
Okay, um, I added a, a cost of, of living increase of five hundred dollars, um, we have that in our cop year, um, we're sending out a lot more pamphlets and, and information, a lot more requests for information, so, um, the cop year and the office supplies are about five hundred dollars.
We're sending out more because of COVID, essentially, people are, or just that's the way.
They're not getting out and they want the information.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, and stop me if I'm going too fast, so, are we good so far?
Mm-hmm.
Computer expenses, fifty-five hundred.
They've been maintaining pretty, pretty even keel, it does depend on, like this year, we will, uh, be very close if we don't exceed it, a little, for Kelly's computer, which has a lot more memory and hardware and software needs for the town report and all of that stuff, so, um, that fifty-five hundred, it seems to be fine for next year, to cover our expenses with any software needs, updates, et cetera, that we think we would need.
Computer contact services.
Yeah, and that, this item, I'm sure there's a good reason for it, but for, from this year seventeen, which is three years ago.
We've been seeing a security increase in our, um, our service that we need, and so across the state, um, this has been recommended to towns to cover a little stronger, better proposal to protect our, our main hardware, so this is kind of getting caught up, last year we were hoping that it would maintain, and we were, we overspent some serious dollars in FY twenty, so this is trying to get caught up, this is probably going to be very close to what we need, and I'm saying that because I still don't know what their increase will be, and if I do get more information, I of course will send it back to you and have you go back to that line, but at this point, that is our best estimated, historically, what we've been up against with the new IT service that we need.
Thank you, school merger expense, are we going to have to adjust that or?
We should have adjusted it in the, in the budget that we're in now, because that's when that cost is going to come to another town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, we are supposed to be getting compensation for the tax bills that we have to send out because of them again, we didn't get compensated the last time, so, um, I'm not sure how that's all going to go about, but, um, we have got another thirty-two hundred dollars in expense, sending out another insurance tax bill through having hired Nemrick to, to help us with the adjustment and to send out the, the actual bills with paper and, and postage, so I've got it at zero, because I don't see that's going to happen in FY twenty-two, I don't think we need to budget for that, I think that will be not a, not an issue at this point.
Thank you. Miscellaneous, miscellaneous is miscellaneous, so it seems to be pretty standard.
It is pretty standard, it ranges, you know, very close to that seventeen fifty price, I just added a little inflative boost there, fifty dollars, it, it, it can range from, from a piece of machinery that broke, such as a punch, hole punch, or it can be anything that's, that's related to the office and, and you folks.
Thank you, county meeting expenses, so is this just childcare?
That's all it is, is.
Did we have childcare last year? I remember someone asked us to return it, so we have not had childcare, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm not positive, it, two years ago, I think we did, it's, it's per need, people have to request it to, to actually have it installed, because we did it for two years with, for one child or no, no children, so we stopped and now we're asking for a request, but it's still within our budget of half, the school does the other.
I think there was a request last year, the year before, that we have childcare, so.
Then we, then we probably did it.
Maybe Marion made it, something like that, yeah.
Those kids were running around.
Yeah, volunteer recognition, yeah.
We're maintaining, I don't see it going up any.
Yeah, advertising, legal notices, boot request.
We are going to be very much over this year, of course, because of the need, and that, that fluctuates every year, so I, I don't see us needing to jump and, and get worried that every year we're going to need more advertising for positions or et cetera, so this covers the average of what we've experienced in the last four or five years, and so that's why it's where it is, I don't think we should, you know, worry about jumping to.
But that's advertising in general, so we're not marking that we're advertising for the zoning board for a permit and a broader, or?
No, they have their own line.
Those all have their own line, so where would we be advertising for the town clerk?
This is the town clerk, this is, um, any type of employment opportunity, it is for your, um, any, any ordinances that you've changed. It is for your, um, any, any ordinances that you've changed, et cetera.
Okay, that's the same.
V L C T?
Uh, that one is pending. I do not have that information. That will definitely have to be relooked at when I do get that.
Okay.
So this one is not set.
Training, meeting materials, blockboard meetings?
This is just, since I've been here, it's been that total.
Yeah, those are, if we go to the thingamafillier or whatever, that covers that. Wyndham Regional Planning?
Same thing. I have not received their increase yet. That will have to be revisited.
Thank you. Insurance?
Same thing.
Legal services? Legal counsel.
Every year it's different. You can see FY19, we exceeded it by a substantial amount. By 18, 20, we did not. Will we this year? I, I think we will. And I, the only thing that's saving us is that the Mandich legal services came right out of the Mandich fund so that it's not coming out of our, our budget. So I'm not asking for an increase. I think it's, it's in the, in the realm of being where it needs to be. There will be times that, that we need it. And it's, it's one of those things. So not asking to increase it, though.
Town office phones? Have we gotten that?
We have. We're, they don't just send us for FY starting January 1st. They just, they slowly but surely update your, your bills and all of a sudden you notice there's increases. And if you looked at your home phone, it's the same thing. So I took the last couple bills that we've been receiving and I've increased it by that rate to get that number, which is 4,400.
Town report. Now, are we sending fewer, mailing fewer town reports out or not?
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm down with the town report.
Okay. So the staff hours is, is our administrative assistant putting it all together.
Right.
Um, and it's, it's a good, good dollar amount, it's not. And bulk mailing, we are, we've, we've dropped it a little bit because we don't send out as many. People come get them. They understand that it's, it's a huge expense to mail them and half the time they don't get them. You, you folks knew Janamine last year, requested it. We sent it out in a timely manner and she never got it, ever. So she can't have got it alone. So people know that, that they don't count on the mail, they, they come get them.
How many years has it been since we started mailing them to everyone?
Uh, it was in our, um, was that our town meeting somewhere about eight or nine years ago, before I, I got here, but not by much? That it was at town meeting that, that we should, um, to anybody that requests them, we'll mail them out to them. So until that's changed, it's, it's up to the, um, the taxpayers to change it if they want to. But it seems to be working very well. Like I said, there's not very many that ask for it.
Okay, page two? Lively, yes. So we have town manager, clerical finance officer, all proposed 2.5% increase. Good to be in those things at 2.5? Office supplies? Tax bill?
We went up last year because the tax envelopes went from the clerk's side of the office to the executive side of the office. So we feel we have it covered. That's why we're not asking for any more. We don't have any history of it, but we're feeling like that it's covering it at present time.
How, how come cell phones?
This number has, is going to change because we are, um, we are not coding to the correct line. All this was, is coding is for my cellphone and it needs to, it needs to be more of a, of a charge. So I've left it the same. It's not an increase, so, but it does need to. We're overrunning one phone line and we've looked at it and there should be a split there. So we will be utilizing that line a little more efficiently.
Postage?
Postage, we're, we're asking for a minimal increase. We just got a, a bump from the postal service, but I'm, I'm assuming that with more people doing mailing, et cetera, that that probably will go again.
Due subscriptions and meetings. So this has gone quite a bit in the last couple of years. Is there a reason for that?
It has, it's been maintained at that same number, but I have not been using it to its fullest. So I have no problem dropping that to 1,000 if that's what your pleasure is.
Being the year we're in, I think that's the one thing we will see is less travel.
That's, that's why I'm saying it, and so I, I agree.
Okay, let's do that then. Both with travel and due subscriptions and?
My travel is definitely got to maintain itself. That is me going, checking roads, et cetera. So that's not meeting people per se. It's, it's taking care of business that's requested by taxpayers.
Did we, did we drop dues, subscriptions, meetings to 1,000?
I believe we did.
Yes.
Yes.
But 1,600 is, what you're saying is, is the reimbursement for mileage?
That's correct.
And that hasn't changed dramatically anyway, so.
No, that's pretty standard.
But over the last three years, it hasn't.
So finance training. So this is something we'll have to discuss at some point. We have the 15,000, which we were never really clear on what we were going to do with.
And this being a year of transition, it's not the year to spend it, unfortunately.
That was originally brought up at town meeting, we put it there. It was voted on at town meeting. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Was he or Mark, for somebody from Denmark to train?
Um, I think it was financial consulting.
Financial manager or whatever.
If needed and so.
I was always unclear how we were going to.
Yes, exactly right. It was unclear, so. But I think you're right. If we're going to have a new clerk, treasurer, whatever, that, that, that money might be spent. Maybe training or consulting or, we'll know more later, I guess, this may.
I, I feel like that, that will be spent this year and not probably to its fullest, but Yeah. once new people are, are onboard.
Yeah.
Then, then we can start training, but it's foolish to train a person that is leaving. So whether we carry that number over for FY22 also, or at least half of it, probably would make sense because there is going to be a learning curve.
Have we used any of it this year?
No, we have not.
So let's, so I don't see a problem carrying. As, as it was voted on in town meeting to do this, I think we need to carry it over.
The complete amount?
Yep. What do you mean by carrying over? Not adding to that year?
No, we didn't spend any of the 15,000 that they, that they voted on at town meeting.
So you're going, basically, we're asking for zero next year because we're carrying the 15 over.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't work that way. Your budget's going to end. That 15 is going to be in surplus or whatever.
I'm coming for you, I, what you're saying is something.
But the dollar amount, I got what he said, it's dollar amount that we didn't spend should be carried over to FY22 for proper training. And truly, I think some of that 15 is going to be used this year, but probably not all of it.
Yeah.
And then another half of it next year. So if that 15 jumped to, let's say, 20, uh, 7,500, then that would make sense.
That makes more sense, right. Put 7,500 there for that next year.
For next year, and 75 will be spent this year, just, I mean, I'm just saying that out loud.
Instead of zero, instead of leaving it as a, yeah.
Yeah.
So 75?
Yeah.
Yeah, the year's not over yet, that's for sure. Okay, contracted services?
Uh, we have not yet received that information either. That would have to be relooked at when we do get the information from contracted services.
Office equipment?
Some years it's, it's extremely necessary and other years it's not. I left it alone this year because of the renovation. Uh, we've had some chairs literally fall apart and we have some public seating that needs to be updated. So I left that alone for this coming year, if possible.
Elections?
What's your pleasure, yes?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah. Ballot clerks?
Okay, so we, I had a quick conversation with Ally. We have two elections for FY22, so the dollars amount will, should maintain to where they are.
Are we going to be spending more this year because you'll need, because of the way the mail-in ballots are? Do we know?
The year we're in, you're asking.
I, I don't think so, but I, I'm not positive of that. And I'm not sure that they know that for sure right now.
Okay.
But I, it, it can't, it shouldn't be any more than that, but it should be right around that.
Operating supplies? 4,500, that's higher than usual for because?
Well, if you look at FY17, back when we had the, um, the, the need of purchasing equipment, you could see that every other year there's a, there's a bump. And so we're experiencing it this year and we're, we're really not sure what next year's going to bring. With the elections, a lot of new things are going to be bumped around. As we all know, that, that's a huge
May have to come back to that.
bouncing ball. But yeah, we might know a little more later.
Yeah.
If you want to go back to it.
Treasury's office. Salary for the treasurer, assistant treasurer.
I have no idea what to do with that. I added more hours
Yeah.
than what was previously sought after.
We might know more later about that, too.
Yes, we would, I would assume.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Being sorry. So we have an eight-hour-a-week position that needs an assistant?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was Ally helping out. I don't know why I don't answer, but.
In our present situation, we have the need for, um, like a bank, um, deposit so that instead of bringing in Paul, who is our treasurer, Ally would take that, that bank deposit and, and bring it to the bank for taxes, let's say, that happened common for the last month. So it, it was handy to have two at a stipend rate, so that's why it's still there. Will the new person need it or want it? I, I can't answer that.
What, what new person?
If we get a new treasurer and/or assistant, that's why it's, it's been pretty much maintained to where it is today.
I'm sorry, Cynthia, I have to ask a question. Are you, wait, what is this?
Hi.
Wait, wait.
It's Cynthia?
Yeah, okay. Are you going to discuss during this budget cycle? I know you talked about the 15,000 for the finance training that you had zero in there and that you're adding back in, but are you going to discuss the finance department as a whole and how that's functioning? And, I mean, it's not that's why we put the 15,000 in there. Like, this is the time to talk about it. Do we, do we want to hire a bookkeeper instead of having Paul have to take on that full responsibility as treasurer? Like, it looks like we're just doing the exact same thing we always have done with no advance of training and trying to rework that finance department.
I think part of it is we're going to see who we hire for the interim town clerk and whether they might want to take on some treasury responsibilities, I believe. Am I correct in that?
You're correct. They've, it's been suggested by several that we go back to what combined the two, so there'd be.
The treasurer and the clerk position are not a combined position. They're two separately elected positions. So you can't, yes, if you get somebody that has those qualifications, they can be elected for both of those positions, but they're two separately independent positions. So, and I think when Doreen was there, she was paid as a bookkeeper. She was not the treasurer at one point. Is that true?
Uh, no, she at one time was treasurer and town clerk. And then we had to kind of separate the money because it was unclear because it was always like both and she wasn't concerned about that. So she, she came up with the idea of giving a lot less money to the treasurer and more to the clerk in case two people tried to run for the same position. But I, Cynthia, what you're saying, not, not, I don't think we've got there, but it makes sense. Somebody's going to have, we got to have that discussion, whether we keep it totally separated. Do we keep it as it's an election position and do we keep going that way or?
Well, and I think that it needs to be defined in that finance department. Like, Kelly has, is that her name, Kelly? I'm sorry. It has a title of, what is it, finance officer or something?
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I, I emailed the other day looking for some reports, an updated trial ballot and updated expenditure report on the town hall renovation. I've gotten no response from either Russ or Ally. I have no idea who they could even ask those questions to. So I feel like we are going to go into town meeting and have this same exact discussion about the finance department with no real clear plan on how it's going to be reorganized. And we, we could be advertising right now for a part-time bookkeeper to help Paul out. We have the money, but nothing's been done. About $15,000 is sitting there. And now it sounds like we're just going to continue in the same direction with, with no real clear understanding of what the money is for. And I, I think we shouldn't wait for the person that's going to apply for the position to tell us what they want to do. We need to create the position and then advertise for the right person.
Cynthia, this is, yeah, I'd like to ask you a question.
Sure.
When you say a bookkeeper, I'm just trying to picture what that bookkeeper would be doing.
Well, I think that's part of what my question is because, to be honest with you, I don't know who does what out there. I've never really gotten a clear answer. I've never really gotten a clear answer as to who is responsible for the financial statements and the general ledger. I have no idea who's responsible for that. So what that bookkeeper might do, or maybe it needs to be more of an accountant role that works one day a week, that does the overall financial statement, but like I said, I don't even know who to ask down there for reports out of the general ledger. Because we don't have that person that's reviewing that on a regular basis to make sure things are correct. And it's not Kelly that's doing it from Nimric, because she's just down there in the checkbook and answering questions as they come up, but she's not doing a complete review of her financial statements on a regular basis. So who is doing that? And that's what that fifteen thousand dollars is for. And nothing's been done with that.
Why, yeah, I, I just, I guess, I guess from my point of view, and that's just, you know, I haven't had a discussion with anybody about it, but it always seemed to me that that bookkeeper or that bookkeeping service would come from something like Nimric.
And that's possible, but, but I said it at meetings before, and this is my Nimric role, my, as a director of court, we have to be asked to do that. That's not what our, what we've been contracted to do. Sounds like we have, yes, but even if that's the expectation, we need to put that into the together between the town and Nimric. But the town needs to decide what it is they want and who's doing what. So if you have Kelly as the finance officer, to me that implies that she's in charge of running reports, knowing what the financial statements mean, but I don't think that's what she's doing. I think she's doing the cables and putting in the payroll, maybe. So not to me as the bookkeeper, doing cables and, and, and payroll. But, but the finance department as a whole, because there's been some changes between personnel, and Ally isn't a longer treasurer, and Paul took over, and his time is limited, and, and I get all that, but we haven't had a solid conversation about who has been in charge of the financial statements after all the little pieces that are put in there. And if that's the way you guys want Nimric to play, that this fifteen thousand dollars, I was hoping the fifteen thousand is going to be used to try to find somebody to come in-house, maybe one day a week, that knew how to read financial statements and could do an overall look at everything. That was my intention when I made that motion to put it into, or when I suggested to put it into the budget. But it is like nothing has even been done with that. I mean, I came thinking last minute, sure, but I think there's nothing proposed for next year, but I say maybe you guys had a discussion to put it back in, I don't know. But I, it just feels like, it feels like we're putting money there and then going to piece it together. I think you need to come up with a plan of who's doing what for financial tasks and then build the budget around that structure. You know, and I give total credit, you know, he's doing as much as he can with the limited time that he has, but it's tough. And he can't answer those hard financial questions like somebody like me might ask. And like I said, I asked for two reports four or five days ago, I heard nothing. I sent it to Ally and I sent it to Russ, and neither of them responded to me.
I didn't get it to you.
So I don't know if, I don't know if they're the ones responsible.
I never got your request, I can tell you that.
Okay.
So please send it back to me and you will get an answer.
But are you the person that should be sending me the financial reports?
I won't be, I won't be doing it myself. I will get you the answers through the right channels.
Okay. So who does it there? Like, who is the one that actually pushes the button to create the report?
It used to be Ally, and now it's not, and that's why we're kind of in a turmoil right now, because we don't have a new person to take over those two positions. So we know Paul is not rerunning, and we're hoping that the clerk that is hired possibly could have some financial ability. So at this point, it's hard to put down a number when we don't have the personnel all sitting in.
This is on, and Russ, FTV, Alice, Nate, and me.
Um, I, that's fine, I'll, you know, I'm going to just keep watching the budget process, but I think you don't need to be, I don't think you should rely on the person that's going to be town clerk to have that finance knowledge. It's a very specialized knowledge. And not saying there isn't somebody out here that can do it, I'm sure there is. I don't know how many people have applied for the position, but I, I think you should build a finance position for the things that you're lacking in-house, and then possibly build your budget around hiring somebody that can do that. That's my suggestion. I think if you don't, you're going to end up in the same spot we've been, with not being able to answer financial questions when they come up. And it's very difficult to trust information when you ask a financial staff and it takes a long time to get that answer. And I don't think anybody's doing anything illegal or wrong, or I think it's just a very specialized knowledge that you need. And I think you guys are trying to piece it together for something that's very complicated to keep track of. I don't think there's anybody there that really should feel bad that they don't understand some of it. It's, it's a whole different world than, than for-profit business. So that's my two cents personally.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you. It is one of those things where Paul, I was discussing with Paul today, because he is wants to get done. He's learned a lot, and I think she's right in some ways, that somewhere we should sit for the meeting with Kelly and Paul before we go too far to say, in this department, those are the two people who really, it comes out of Russ's department a little bit, but it really is Kelly who's doing it and it's Paul, just get a little more direction on where Paul thinks we should be going, because he's, he's there, he's done it for a while and realizes, you know, it was a little harder than I thought. And then what is Nimric's role? Could they come in and train who? Is it Kelly or the next person, or is there somebody we hired that actually does what she says, comes in once a week or once every other week to look at it?
And you know, I think it would be nice to have some serious recommendations from Cynthia.
Yeah.
You know, Cynthia, I think you should make a recommendation, a specific recommendation.
Yeah.
Are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here, I don't know how to lie to myself.
Okay, just...
Yeah, I mean, we can make, I mean, I think what, what I'm about is right, is I think talking to Paul and talking to Kelly and figuring out, you know, what it is that, that they're doing on a regular basis, I think talking to the auditor.
Yeah, but when I'm, I'm asking, I don't think we can do it right here, right now. But I, I think it would not...
No, I can personally give a recommendation on how I have seen it work in other places.
Fine, I think that would be a good idea.
And I, I do want to just reiterate about the whole Nimric piece. If there is something more that you guys are expecting that we are supposed to be doing as a consulting service to the town, besides what we're doing right now, it needs to be communicated to us. Because we are doing, we are answering questions as they come up, we have done the year-end stuff, and we're balancing the checkbook. Those are the things we're doing. So if there is an understanding between the board that we are doing more than that, then we just need to clarify it. We can do whatever you guys want us to do.
Yeah.
But we, we don't like to come in and kind of step on anybody's toes, you know, we want to take direction from the manager or from the board as to what it is their expectation of.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, it appears that, you know, I'm hearing two things from you. One is that you might actually have an idea of how that should work with the fifteen thousand dollars and how it should be used and what role Nimric might have in using that. That was where I thought we were going with that when we first got the fifteen thousand dollars. But we're just, you know, I think it would be helpful if you, you know, to, not right this minute.
No, I don't agree.
Okay. It would be good.
Okay. Cynthia?
We'd appreciate it, I would. Okay, good.
Thank you. All right, keep moving. Office supplies, is this, is this treasurer on page two clerk expenses?
I would recommend that we wait and get an opinion from the new person that takes over, so that that person is aware of their budget, or at least have Paul come and address it before he gets back.
If you might go back and say, you need to put more money in that line to get more training.
We'd have some conversation with him.
Talking to him today sounded like he's willing to come in and have that discussion.
Yeah, he, yeah. He said, as you know, he doesn't want to run again. He said he'd do whatever was best for the town, but his time is very... Bank service charges. Bank fees and money orders.
Again, that whole line should wait until we have...
Okay, all right.
People that are actually manning the seat.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's our two pages, right?
Amen.
Yeah.
Holding the seat.
All right, so next meeting, do we want to keep doing, going off to the next two pages?
I will give you an update of what you've done so far on page one and two, and we'll go to three and four.
Does that seem to be working? Thank you. For the moment, okay. Thank you. Full time agreement.
Hello, Susan?
Yep. That's Nate, right, yep.
Thanks, Doctor. When we were talking about the truck, I mentioned something about questions about the monies, where they're coming from, we make up the twenty-seven. Is it prudent to wait to during the budget discussion? And you said yes. You didn't say yes that you're only going to do the first two pages. So where would you like me to ask my questions about the twenty-seven dollars a thousand? And in relation to next year's proposed budget numbers?
Well, you can ask the questions now. I was assuming that when we, is this correct for us when we get to the, how does that work? Is it town garage, or when we discussed?
Pages five and six will be all about the highway.
Let's see what I'll do. I'll give you a general overview of my comments, and I'll wait until you get to those specific line items in future meetings.
Good, great.
My general overview is, is you're finding money that, and like Sheldon mentioned about earlier, that you painstakingly last year made a budget that now seemingly has extra monies that you can take out of. So looking forward a little, keep in mind when you get to these in the following select board meetings, those budget numbers that you're taking money out of that you, is seemingly extra, are for the most part the same amounts next year. So just an example, the eighty-two thousand dollars for fuel and oil, I think it was, gas, fuel, oil, the eighty-two thousand in your budget at FY '21, you're pulling money out to pay for this truck, but yet you rebudgeted eighty-two thousand this year. So I guess my big point is, if there's extra monies in these line items this year, why are they the same number next year? So moving forward, maybe look at those line items a little closely.
Yeah. I think that gas, fuel, oil is something we could use exactly back here from nine thousand to ten, right?
Yep, to seventy-two, or seventy-five, right?
Yeah.
And then it leaves to a bigger concern with, does somebody use a covert change, that, whatever that line item is? You obviously, somebody had a plan last year to have that be thirty-two thousand dollars in your budget this year. Now you're pulling eight thousand dollars out of it. Are you, is there, what you had planned for the thirty-two not panning out? Or did you not do eight thousand dollar worth of work? And then why is the budget next year not reduced by eight thousand dollars, if you don't need it?
So money getting pulled out of the Culvers will be reimbursed through a grant. Forest row is getting done. So when we get reimbursed for that money, it'll get put back into the Culver fund. So essentially, we're really not going to lose any money at the Culver. Gas, fuel, and oil is also the maintenance fund, that's all together, it's not just gas and oil. And with this truck and the purchase of a new truck last year, being more efficient, using less fuel, and lower projected maintenance costs, we should be fine by doing that. Building maintenance costs, we, instead of taking money out, we put an addition on one of the buildings and did a bunch of maintenance, and I have my own sawmill, and I donated all the lumber and the use of the mill. So with that savings, we're going to take that savings out of it and use towards this truck, so.
So then I need a clarification on one thing.
Yep.
The line item for gas, fuel, and oil is eighty-two thousand. There's a line item for repairs and parts of fifty-eight thousand. You're saying the repairs and parts are part of the eighty-two?
No.
I was, no. No, I'm sorry, I, I misunderstood, but no, that's right.
So Ian, I'll bring these all back up when you get to these actual line items and where there should be probably some savings. If there's savings this year, there should be savings next year.
I agree.
And Nate, I would say I agree. When we get there, you bring up a good point, there's no question, so.
Any, anything else? Okay. Hold on, I'm just, I remember it is here.
Yeah. I brought this up to you last meeting. This is the official document drafted by legal counsel. I would like a motion and it to be passed and then signed to forward this to Christopher Harlow and Katina Berg.
Oh, second.
The movement second to sign a communication to our office and indemnification agreement, which is essentially that that power is on their land, but the town uses it for communications, and this will free them from any liability from our use, essentially.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Do I have to send, sign this one?
Yes, you have two copies, one was set aside from the original.
Okay.
And then just pass it down to...
New business, quarterly financials.
This being the first meeting after the quarter ended, by lawyer to receive these, please look at them, and if you have any comments, I will respond to them next meeting. So I will table this item until you have further chance to look at it.
Water truck tanker, this is the meeting. Water truck tanker, first of the meetings.
What did you just say of water?
Yeah.
In your, in your package, you have an agreement that I drafted and the fire department has approved to relocate and reallocate one tanker truck from the fire department to the, to the road crew. In the agreement, as it states, it's for $1, and the road crew is able to utilize it for a water truck so that we can grade our roads in dusty situations like this year. That was really handy. But also, the fire department, if one goes down, one tanker that they have goes down, they can grab ours in a heartbeat and utilize it. Or if they need three, they've got access to three. So it is a really, a great opportunity for both the road crew and the fire department to have a third truck and utilize it, not have just seven. So that's what this is all about. Chuck, you want to add anything to it?
No, just they have actually used it for fires. It's not just a, and if maybe, they have a couple different kinds of situations.
I do have to sing phrases to Chuck. He created a manifold that snaps into the truck's port hole where the water comes out. And what it does is it sends water to the full distance of the truck and so that he's watering our roads. And then if we did have an emergency and the fire department needed it immediately, it's a quick disconnect. That's thrown to the side and that truck's ready to go. So the fire hose is still fit, and there's no modification to the truck that would not allow the transaction back and forth. So it was a great, great idea, and this is just a formal yes that we're.
Better run down to that patent office, sir.
Yeah, that's right.
What do we anticipate maintenance to be?
Say this out again?
What do we anticipate yearly maintenance to be?
Five hundred a year.
I would say, you're changing your oils, you're, you know, eventually the tires, but it's not running. How many hours did you put, like, in the last?
Oh, we probably put 100 hours on it this year.
So tire's going to last a long time. So maintenance will be just maybe, you know, doing cosmetic maintenance, which is the changing in the oils and all of that. So.
I was able to add on to the tractor bearing like they just told me, no charge to, just the guy's time, but the lumber, material, everything.
So how many, how many does this tank compare to what we're normally carrying on one of the 10 miller?
We don't have a tank, one of the 10, it goes into a single actually. Four against a thousand, this is three thousands, so two thirds one. So what happens is, so a year like this year, you have to go to, say, Piggery Road to get water because all the other, Morse Brook Road's dried up, so you get it from Piggery Road. So instead of going down there three times with the other tank, you're going twice with this one. And the other tank has chloride on it. So you wet the road, you're not switching back and forth from chloride to water. You use a thousand gallon tank for just the, it's not chloride, it's dust control, safe line, but anyway, same idea. So you're using one for that and the other for the other.
And fuel for this project's on top of $500, as you already said, is maintenance?
Fuel?
Yeah.
Yep, fuel for this start is fuel that you're not using any other trucks. In our two trucks at once. Okay.
Any other questions? On the table?
I'm going to say, if there's something seriously goes wrong with the truck, you'd be back to us to say whether we're going to spend the money.
Well, we, yeah.
Absolutely. The truck goes back to the park.
Goes back to the fire department. And they can jump it or fix it or sell it or park it out there next to the other, jump it.
They have to be human here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we sign the agreement with the fire department for the fire. Second.
Moved in second to sign the formal agreement between the fire district and the town on the water truck. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Okay, four in favor, one against. Passes. Can you say, I'm sorry?
Sure.
Yes, thank you. Two bits?
Move on to the road.
Okay.
Yeah, I did.
Executive session to the town clerk. The most people in the county.
I'll second.
Who's the second for an executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll do this after item 10, after date of next meeting.
All right.
The search committee asked for one executive session access. Yeah, it's okay with you?
You just said aye, I just wasn't, I just wasn't sure when you were going to do it.
Yeah, oh yeah.
He was, he was given a positive vote. He wanted to make sure it was recorded, okay?
Got it. All right, discussion for elections on November the 3rd.
You requested to decide one item. I have some answers. I'm not actually sure why we're discussing it, but how about?
Uh, I think we just wanted to make sure that things were all in place and didn't need any.
Everything's in place.
Yeah.
The town hall was chosen for two very large reasons. One was that the institute lost its handicap accessibility yet again. They are in the mode to replace their elevator, so they aren't going to be holding any official meetings for a while until they get that done. The second reason was, is that they need to set up the voting machine, and it has to be secure. And the only place we can make it secure is in the town hall so that they can accept votes and ballots, excuse me, for that last week. And they are going to start October 26th filing the ballots that they've received so far, which is in the realm of 700 plus that have come through the mail slot or and/or mail. So the BCA that you're all part of will be asked to help with different hours on different days to make sure that it's done in an appropriate manner. But that's why the venue was changed.
Did you say there's a mail slot in the town hall?
There is.
There is. Right inside the car?
And it's a big sign that says place tax. First it was place tax payments, and now it says place ballots.
Any other questions?
Yes, the, was placed on the ballot, thank you Sue, for the clarification that the town manager at least reflecting that we've received 700 votes or as of October 14th, 700 mail-in votes, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the clerk reflected approximately a week ago, and I want to be accurate, that there are 2,256 residents currently registered to be eligible to vote, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the Secretary of State's protocol as of that writing for last week, and I'm assuming that's today, has provided us with only 700 physical ballots to receive voters at our venue on election day, is that correct?
No.
Okay.
We've received an additional 1,000. So we have in-house, somewhere in the vicinity of 1,700 additional ballots so that if a person didn't get one or made a mistake on it or refused to utilize the one that was in the mail, and they want to do it in person, that we have 1,700.
Or they're just, or registered to vote within 24 hours of the election.
That's correct, and we are receiving some of those already, yep.
And is that all getting 1,700? That's the, or where you in line get more?
We can, not at this point, but we can next day air them. The state has told the clerks that if you start to run within a couple hundred, 300, don't feel bad about, you know, requesting more. But you start doing the math, you've already got 700. We have 1,700 ballots, that's 2,400. All we need is 150 people to actually use the ballot that they received through the mail and will be sent. So we're ready, and it is very, very well thought out on the state's.
Yeah.
So that's a good development, getting the extra 1,000 ballots in the week. If a, if a citizen shows up with the mail-in ballot in hand on the day of election, what is the protocol?
It can be filled out, or it can be filled out right there. But you're going to be, you walk in and they will make you sign in, and if you made a mistake or you don't want to use it, you just have to sign an affidavit that you did want to use that ballot, you want to, you want to have one handed to you in person. And so there's provisions for that also.
Where is this, where in the town hall or the?
What we're planning on doing is, as you walk in the front door or through the elevator, whichever you need, the two booths will be set right there. There'll only be two. You'll fill them out. If you don't, haven't filled them out, the two people that are sitting there will be the BCA members, they will check you in before you do that, of course. And then you're going to walk through the office, you're going to put your vote if you hadn't, through the mail, through the counter, and then you're going to walk out the back door. For BCA members that come with their ballot in their hand, you're going to go through that line, and there's only going to be a certain amount of people that are allowed in the town hall at one time. So there might be a line outside on those heavy hours, like noon, people, a lot of people come at lunchtime. There might be a line, which you'll be asked to go through the line and the process. As you leave, you'll be checked off, you'll go out the back door, and then you'll assume your station after the fact. So you'll do the same protocol, and then you'll assume your station if you're helping.
Thank you to the chair for putting this on the agenda tonight. Thank you to the town manager for all his excellent work, and thank you to the town clerk also for her excellent work in getting the additional ballots and getting us all set up. It looks very good.
It looks like it's going to work.
It does.
And we're counting on our construction people because we've got to get all of the blister stuff out of there, but they promised that that would be done by October 26th, so.
Thank you.
It's working.
Yep, good. Thank you to the volunteers, Sue.
Yes.
Yep. Cemetery, Westminster West.
Westminster West Cemetery has more room than what we first reported. And what we found is that the old maps that were started well prior to anyone that's still living had held lots for families that no longer exist. So what I'm proposing, and what I would like for this board to give me permission, is to get bids on surveying the Westminster West Cemetery in this year's budget to verify how many spots we have open. The number, when I first reported this, was 12, and now we're assuming we have somewhere between 30 and 40. But we would like to know that for a fact. So that means the survey will not only take the land and verify corners, et cetera, but it will also verify the roads and how many folks are in the road, and that will.
I have ones that are, that are, for example, I have a plot, but I can't ever find it. I mean.
They'll be cleaned up, but they'll also be very, very obvious because we're going to make the adjustments after the survey, and that's really what we're after.
Okay.
Because of the modern day, we're putting four corners on it. When you buy a lot, it's $300, 150 areas to put four corners on.
Well, I don't have four corners on mine.
So, anyway.
So is this a specialty surveyor that does this?
No, actually, the last time it was done, it was done by Aurelius, Euboean Ardo. So I feel that we have three or four good surveyors that are in our area all the time that we put it out to bid, and I would come back with that number to verify that this is a real need and that we can afford it.
Would that go into the cemetery permission budget?
It would go into the cemetery.
Yeah.
Fund, and if, and if we couldn't do it in this fiscal year, then we need to plan for it for next year's budget. But I would, I would like a motion tonight to, to proceed with the survey.
Second.
Bids, survey bids.
Moved in second into, bid out, survey work on the Westminster West Cemetery.
Can I answer your question? The board has just given you permission to go get bids, but normally, because we've already given you permission to go do it, when you're, so you're really not giving bids, you're giving estimates. Because how is somebody going to give you a bid if you're not sure that the selection are going to approve it?
We know the scope of work, and we know it needs to be done.
Yes.
And it's foolish not to do this.
No, I'm just agreeing there, I'm just saying.
Because the, the alternative is buying new land, and that's.
No, but I'm just, I'm thinking about those people that you're asking. They think that, okay, if I'm a little bit, I'm going to get it.
Worst case scenario, it will be in July of next year versus the spring of this coming year.
So what you're saying?
Those are the two, that's the only stipulations for the bids.
Normally, he comes and says, these bids are going to be $500 or $5,000. So we say, okay, not to see $5,000, go hit the bid. What he's asking, we've got no idea what he's going to ask for price.
So you're saying you think we should have a motion that says that we survey the Westminster West Cemetery to see what we have for plots and to bid that work out? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, I'm just trying to say, we're giving him permission to go get bids. These people think that if they get it, we're going to go ahead. We didn't give them permission to go ahead and actually do it.
I will make sure that the stipulation is that it either happened in this fiscal year or next. So it will either happen in May, June, or July, August.
But there again.
That's the only thing that I need to, to.
You're asking the select board to give you approval with no doubt about it.
That's correct. But no, no, no. I'm, I'm going to come back to you before I can give this out.
Okay.
With the bids, you're going to know exactly what it's going to cost. I'm going to tell you whether I can afford it in this budget.
Okay.
Or if I have to ask for money next year.
Okay.
Got, I understand.
That, that way we will have the information, we won't be buying land that we don't need to buy or obtain.
Okay, good. So that's the new, the first one was put some heat, but.
He's upset?
I didn't get my motion.
No, I'm just saying, we're still.
Toby made the motion, Kevin seconded, but we didn't vote.
We didn't vote for it, yes.
Okay. It's been moved in second to, and what is the motion that you made?
To authorize the town manager to obtain survey bids for the Westminster West Cemetery.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No. Yeah. Okay. Actually, I'll put in mine a hundred for the business.
I don't know.
But that?
She didn't say anything, did she?
No, she got locked out.
She left, yeah.
Okay. We've seen.
Say it there.
She did it.
Huh?
She did it.
I thought she was going to fill them up.
What's that?
I don't know.
Okay, anyway. Okay, anyway.
Manager's report.
Okay, so in your package, under the manager's report, I didn't know where else to put them, there is some information that I want you to start thinking about in this budget that we're trying to put together. One is the inflation of asphalt. Though fuel is way down, liquid asphalt has gone up. Hence, our mileage that we can afford is less and less every year and we're falling behind. So it's, I'm not asking for anything tonight, I'm just trying to get your minds on things that are possibly going to come up in budgets discussions later as we get into the weeds of this budget. The other one that you have, which I please do not read out the numbers, but it is the last trash slash recycling extension that was possible for next year. And it is, the information is there. I broke it down to how that affects our budget and our long-term trash program. And I just received from Wyndham Solid Waste Management their costs of recycling, trucking, and disposal of the trash, and he is substantially lower than that. So it is something that we need to, to look at and that's why I gave it to you in my management report is not to make it public because if it's got to go out to bid, I don't want his bid to be compromised. Also, in your packet, you have our equipment rates and replacement information. Again, it's something to read, to try to figure out yourselves, and if you have any questions, please, just give me a call. I'll, I'll walk you through it of how we got to where we are at. And as we said before, Craig and Chuck and myself are going to get together and give you a, a replacement schedule. Of course, it's a proposed replacement schedule. If something totally breaks down, then we're going to have to think about changing it, but it'll get, at least get us on a straight in our plan of attack for our replacements for our equipment. So last and not least is in your packet, you have a letter that was drafted by Larry Slayson and signed by Larry Slayson that was sent out today for Mr. Derby. He did not respond. He called me and the day after and never responded again. So I had given him the go-ahead to send it, so he sent the letter today. It will come in front of you if he does fill out the application because it's gone through such turmoil. It will be denied or approved by you folks. So it could, it could. I could ask for a site visit if you thought it was necessary or if everybody knows where it is. Please drive quiet and take a look at it. But either way, it's going to go in front of you one more time. Thank you.
Board's in the mission?
I have nothing to report other than we might be in the demand of a Zoom meeting for DRB meeting because of a, an appeal that is coming before the DRB and the amount of people that have requested information. So it's either do it in waves in this room, I've got permission to use this room, do it in waves, or have it via Zoom and in person. So I'm not sure how that's going to work out, but it's just FYI, what's happening in town. Nothing to do with you folks. Just, just know it's, it might be a possibility.
Okay, other business. And I want to bring this up and I apologize because I asked at the social media committee, we put on the agenda and I did not look closely enough and I should have made sure it was on there. So I just want to make a, I just want to inform you about it. So Graham Renaud and Yvette Hemler and Laurie Lou and I met as the social media committee with the main idea being to set up a, a formal Facebook page for the town. And we discussed how we would do that and the limitations that would be on it.
Who are your friends?
Yvette Hemler, Peter Barrett's house, and my cousin Laurie Lou, people who know about this stuff. So, and, and Yvette had sent some information which I will send on to you. And we strongly feel that the town should have a formal Facebook page in order to get information out there quickly. And it would be a page that essentially is just, at this point, educational, this is happening, these are the agendas, there would, there would not be, people would not be allowed to comment. The moderators would just be a few people, probably Kelly, the town clerk, someone on the select board. I want more time, more time to discuss this, but, and I talked to Patty about it because I thought it would be ideal for this election. I'm sure she's getting a lot of questions and she could post answers on it. She, she does not think she'll have time to do that, so maybe it's not quite as urgent as we think it would be. But if you would think about that and we could do it, there would not be any expense involved. And some information I hope to have, there are a couple of towns, Williston and Bennington, who both have very good Facebook pages that, they don't allow comments, but it provides a lot of information very quickly to people in town. So I'd like to talk about this again and get your permission to pursue that.
So who would be putting the information on there?
Well, that would be the moderators. So that would be, and we can talk about this, so it would be, in the beginning would be Kelly, the town clerk, and me. And maybe eventually it would be like the road department, the Listers, any town department that might, and there would be guidelines, you know, you can't do this, you can't do that. It would be pretty simple and basic. The whole idea is if you want to get information to people quickly.
It's real, it's real awkward. I mean, if I, I'm on, I Google all the time, I'm dealing with all these different towns.
There's a lot of departments that have their own.
Yeah.
There's a lot of.
Exactly. See, that kind of thing.
You can have information for the next meeting.
Yes, I'm hoping to talk to the people in those two towns I follow, but no one has gotten back.
I can give you a few.
Could we get to the, to the executive session because I think there's kind of some important things we need to talk about.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't worry. Okay. Well, let's go into executive session, and we already voted, so we're on the executive session. Now I'm indicating motion.
Okay, I move that we offer the job of town clerk to Pauline O'Brien, Pauline Blake O'Brien.
The maiden name.
Okay, Pauline Blake O'Brien. And to have her start as soon as she can.
And we authorize the chair of the board to negotiate the contract.
Yeah. Within our budget.
Within our budget.
Right. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second. I'm looking at Russ, Russ is right in the minutes down there.
Oh, right, sorry.
I'm waiting. Yeah.
Are you caught up?
I am.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion passes. Do you want me to call it?
Yeah, but now you need adjournment.
Oh.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, the date of next meeting?
October 28th.
October 28th here at 6:30 PM.
Yep. And move to adjourn.
Moved.
Sheldon's second.
Seconded.
Craig already did that.
All in favor of adjournings?
Aye.
Aye.